Board members, I think two missing. They're down in middle school. They're introducing the middle school log. All kids, right? Maybe we'd like to see that with their kids. So, we're gonna go ahead and be here as soon as they can. So, with that said, I'd like to ask Dugan Rainey to give us an indication of our...
Power heads, dear heavenly Father, thank for this day. Thank for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. Be with us tonight as we go forward in these discussions on these matters here at the school. Watch over our children, keep them safe today and the rest of the week. Watch over us through the coming weeks in this troubled times as we go through some issues that we're having. In your name, pray, amen.
Okay, our first order of business is open forum for public comments. We do have two people signed up, Sharon Lawton and Kelsey Weisell. Sharon, would you like to go first?
Um, I'm on that list.
It's, I think there's another one over there.
Oh, okay. We passed up there.
Okay. Um, first, I want to thank y'all for letting me speak. And what I'm getting ready to say is just my personal opinion. I'm not lying this from anybody else, but it's my opinion, my opinion only. Um, I brought an article that I had written and paid, paid in the Post Signal back in two thousand nine. I was on the school board at that time, back in two thousand, early two thousand. So, I've seen a lot of history with this district. What's disturbing to me, and everyone in the board members, is that a lot of things have not changed since the early two thousand. And what I'm talking about is financials. We, back in about two thousand and four, we were able to finally get this district out of the red. When I got on the board, this is gonna be kind of like a repetitive thing. The district, uh, had purchased, had bought a high school. We called, I mean, the million dollar gym. They went through a bank, didn't go through the community to borrow that money or have a bond. So, when I got on the board, we were borrowing, they were borrowing money from, and that, from a bank in Pilot Point to pay because the money that was being paid to this gym was caught, was taken out of M and O, maintenance operations fund. Came on the board, asked for the financials, wanted to know when the balloon note was. It was, it was ballooning, no one knew. Now, some of these board members, not these board members, but I don't know if Paul, I can't remember if Paul was on there. Uh, Ricky Kemp was on there at the time. They didn't know when this note was ballooning, and it ballooned in two years. Now, when you do a lease to purchase, you're putting everything on the line. So, the, as forward, they had a bond election for the middle school, six point, I think, six point three million dollars. And then they rolled in the high school debt into that. The whole idea of this, some of the board members at the time was to build a high school. We had less than a thousand taxpayers in our district. That means the district could not sustain a high school. So, through the progression of hiring different superintendents, they found a superintendent that was willing to do that. He came from Kalisburg, he left Kalisburg, left them in that same financial situation that this district is in now. This has been going on for years. What's disturbing to me is, you know, Paul has been on this board for years. They've known the financial situation that they have put us in. I have made comments for years, it's gonna be a numbers game. The quality is gonna go down because they need quantity. When they started taking transfers, which about sixty percent of the students are transfers now, you're now in a responsible situation where you can't get out of it. Because building this building, building this high school, you now need the numbers. The student ratio to teachers was great, and that's why a lot of parents brought their, their children here. Because test scores are high, that's great. But the financial part of it, this is what you're sacrificing. And you, this board has a fiduciary responsibility to all the taxpayers in this county, in this school district, and to the students. Because with two F ratings, and sure, they're appealing those ratings, but when you get something from the state and says you're gonna have this many students, you have the right to appeal that, especially after the first year when you do not see your district is growing. So, there comes in, in the next year, the ADA funding, the district's getting deeper and deeper in debt. The student ratio is going to be higher because there, something's gonna have to give financially. And what really disturbs me, excluding Brandon on this board, they all voted just recently to give Dr. Holloway a pay raise. Now, that, I don't know about any of you all, but I have a budget that I have to live by at home. If I have five thousand dollars in the bank, I'm not gonna write checks for six thousand dollars. I'm responsible for that. And that is what the board should be responsible for also. They are not doing that. They are going deeper and deeper in debt, and it's your money that they're spending. And they are not being responsible to do this. It's not, it's not right. Dr. Holloway is, has retired, but I'm gonna ask the board, I wanna know what you all are paying him to retire? Because I wanna know if he's actually getting retiring or if he's getting a buyout. Because you just extended his contract, is that not correct?
It's not our policy to debate this in an open forum, but I will tell you unequivocally, you're not getting a buyout.
Okay, well, that makes me feel good. Because a lot of districts, when they need a superintendent to leave, they will buy out his contract. So, that gives me great pleasure to know that you're not spending any more money. I wanna address real quick, you know, the financials. I have asked Dr. Holloway for financials when you all decided to go to a four-day school day, school week. If anybody, they use the teachers, this is just my opinion, use the teachers as the excuse. I asked Dr. Holloway in a meeting I had two weeks ago with him, what, what's the financial situation? How much money is the district saving every, every week? Sharon, we're not saving anything. I said, what did you present to the board? We're not saving, and I said, you can't tell me that because you're not running buses on Mondays? You're not fixing lunches on Mondays? You're lowering your utilities on Mondays? You have to be saving money. He tells me he did not give you all anything. Now, I hope that's not accurate because as a board, once again, you have a responsibility to us to know the numbers. And when you're saving money, you know, it's, it's just hard for me to believe that closing this district down on one day a week is not saving money. Second of all, you're, the way you handle a board seat, when somebody is in an election, and I, I can speak from this personally because I'm chairman of election committee on a board of directors in another, in another place. When we hold an election, we put the board members in place. If they leave within six months of their, of the next election, we do not fulfill that position. If it's more than six months, we hold another election. According to Dr. Holloway, there's no protocol. They just fill in whomever they want. And this letter, this article that a previous board member and I put in there, we discussed the good old boys. Because it appears to me, you had a person running for the school board twice, got the, seats became available. They did not put her in there. They put in one of their friends, kind of a guest person, good old boy. Is that how you want your district to be run? Do you not want people to question things? That makes more sense to me. They, they have no protocol with this. They, they just do what they want randomly. I would like to see guidelines for that. You need to have some guidelines. Sec, another thing, Sean Nesbitt was on this board for years. He is responsible for a lot of this financial, these financial issues. He's a CPA. He is now the auditor for this district. That is scary. I was told by Dr. Holloway, well, Sharon, it's hard to get people to do this. What have you really looked? Or did you just want, was it a convenience for you? Was there a reason for that? To have somebody that has been doing this with the district is responsible too, and now he has become the auditor? Who does he answer to? He needs to be answering to all of y'all, all of us, and not the good old boys. Another thing, when you make a comment to anybody in the audience, and it's a rude comment, you need to publicly apologize to that person. You don't do it behind closed doors. I, I admire somebody more that will admit to their mistakes than somebody that will stand up and say, I didn't do it. So, if, I'm asking this board, if you are being rude or shutting somebody down in this board meeting, you need to publicly apologize to them. That's the right way to do it. Thank y'all for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Just one, one clarification, the gym that Sharon referred to was built sometime in the nineties.
Nineteen ninety-nine.
None of us were born at that time, might have been Olivia. Okay, next up is, um, Sharon Gray. We got two stacks, they're out of order, I just, you wanna...
That's fine, I just know that once we wore some of them, was upset because, you know, we're now...
Well, we're just gonna be the champions.
I'm gonna start with, uh, if I get them off the phone, I'll hold up. This is a very important topic to me, so I'll hold up. If painting is needed, make a statement before your night because I see through the place of our expectation on a group of people before me and their commitment to our children. While the state of our finances is really important, there is no higher priority than the safety of our children. I understand it is impossible for us to protect them from everything, but it is our duty as parents, grandparents, school administration, staff, and community to use every resource available to us to protect them. Protecting them should not be focused only on the outside, but potential threats from within. I have on multiple occasions and to multiple people addressed the concern that we are not vetting our staff to the highest standards possible. Let me make this very clear. This is not an issue about one particular person. This is an issue about setting a standard across the board and standing firm in that standard to hold every employee to the same standard. However, a few employees have been used as an example to drive my point home. Does this school have a standard? Or is it determined case by case on whether or not this is a nice person? Or if they were recommended by X? Or if we need them in order to acquire another employee and so on and so forth? Do you run background checks on potential staff? Are the background checks done again when contracts are renewed? If so, is there anything that would not be acceptable to you? Is the background checks always up for debate? If it is not the first tool of armor to protect our children, then why even spend the time and money on running them? When discussing this topic with board members, I've received a variety of responses. I'll give you a few examples and then my thoughts on those answers. First response was, this has been brought up by others and has been addressed. However, this was a superintendent decision and not a board decision, and he refuses to take action. Our hands are tied. My thoughts on that. This would imply that the board could take action on it, if they would take action if they could. It has been shown through school policy that the board does have the authority to take action, but has not. In addition, our superintendent is no longer here, so why not take action? Second response, no need to be concerned. This person does not work in an instructional role and does not have direct interaction with the children. We all know this to be untrue. A particular person interacts directly with assisting our littles in the cafeteria along with countless other adults. It's a curious role for a maintenance man. He also assisted coaching our middle school girls' basketball team. These are only a few things that I'll mention only because I've witnessed them personally. Do I believe that these are the only instances? No. He most definitely has direct interaction with the children and is viewed as an instruction, instructor by our children. To take this point one step further, I told the board members, the board member that made this comment, I would almost feel better if they were a teacher because they have a schedule to follow and an expectation of where they should be in our school and who should, who they should be in contact with. This individual, this individual's actual job title allows them unchecked and unmoderned movement around our campuses to encounter any student at any time. Furthermore, isn't it disrespectful to another individual that holds a similar job title that this individual spends his time outside, doing things outside of their job description? Do all of your employees get to decide their job duties regardless of their job title? The third comment, we cannot deny, I mean, we cannot deny unemployment for a DUI. I don't know if this is true or not, but when part of your job responsibilities for transporting students to events is part of your job description and you're unable to perform that job responsibility, then why would you be hired? Fourth comment, everyone deserves a second chance. You're absolutely correct. However, does that second chance need to be with the children at Taoga ISD? There are other jobs out there that allow for second chances and growth that does not compromise our responsibility to these children. At the very least, the policy should have a standard on passage of time before they can be considered for employment. The fifth response, if you would just get to know X, Y, or Z, I believe you would find that they're a good person. Again, let me make this crystal clear. This is not about an individual person. This is about holding every employee to the same standard. And yes, if you do so, it will affect these individuals that I'm referencing. However, by not having a firm standard, I feel you have not only done a disservice to our students, but also to these individuals who have now been placed under scrutiny. This situation should have never been created. If you cannot pass the first criteria point of background check, then that is where it should end. Since there doesn't seem to be a standard, I shudder to think that what else, of what else has been accepted that we are unaware of. You may wanna take a few moments to look at our society and history to see how many really good people have made really bad decisions that have harmed other people. The sixth, would it make you feel better if we keep these individuals at the high school and not around the littles? The children at the high school are older and have a little more experience in discerning good from bad, whereas the littles have blind faith in you as the leaders of our school to only put people in their midst that they should trust. So, would it be better? Yes. Does it make it right? No. It has been made perfectly clear to me that my idea of vetting employees of this district to the standards that our children deserve and yours are very different. It has been made very clear that you're willing to take risks that I am not. As much as I always try to do what is right for all the children and not just my own, I have absolutely no power to affect this. My efforts to implore you to set an unwavering standard for our children have fallen on deaf ears. I am aware that my personality can sometimes be bold, boisterous, and confrontational at times. But I assure you, this topic is my weakness. At this time, I place my soul, my focus solely on protecting my own because it's the only power I have. And I'll offer prayers for the rest. Maybe Taoga ISD is not the place for us. As a person who has lived through and survived trials and trauma, I sincerely, sincerely hope that there is never a time regarding current or future employees of this district that any of you have to look back at this conversation and say, I wish I had. And I sincerely hope that there is never a time you have to look a child in the face and they ask you, why didn't you? Best wishes to you all as you move forward on a path to recovery for our district. Please don't let the focus on finances cause you to lose focus on other issues. As a community, I implore you to make your voices be heard, no matter the topic, no matter the topic. Thank you.
Were those all from board members?
Yes, everyone of them, every board member.
We have seven board members.
I'm not gonna say you can read it. Those were real responses from real board members, but my opinions on those responses.
Okay. Patty, I don't have a form for you, did you?
I'm sorry?
Did you wanna talk, I don't have a form for you.
No.
Okay, Kelsey?
I'm gonna read, it'd be better that way. Good evening, my name is Kelsey Weisell. My family recently moved from Taoga from Pilot Point, just down the road. We have a first grader and a soon-to-be fourth girl that will also attend school here. Part of the reason that we elected to move here was the excellent reputation of the school district. I will admit that I was a bit naive to not looking to the financial health of this school district prior to making our decision. I will also admit that my knowledge of how the school board functions is very limited and my knowledge of the history of Taoga, I assume, regarding the financial system is extremely limited. However, I do have extensive knowledge of budget creation and management as I have performed a high-level corporate career for years and am charged responsible for multi-million dollar budgets. I also now currently run a successful real estate brokerage. I am truly baffled at the lack of accountability and ownership that has taken place with taxpayers while they were covered by the board over the past several years. We all know that public school funding is an ongoing issue, but that does not justify what has taken place here. Without checks and balances, almost any business will eventually fail. My questions for the school board, what is the monthly process for reviewing financials? Are department heads responsible for reviewing budgets monthly and accounting for variances? What changes occurred as a result of the first up-rating? Who was held accountable? How was the budget creation and monitoring process managed as a result of the first up-rating? A sliding school district reputation will have significant implications on property values and growth in this area, both of which are critical to solve the issue because of their effect on tax revenue. This is a compounding issue. With that being said, how is the school board committed to change? And how do we trust that, knowing that there has been a lack of oversight and accountability for many years that led to this point? And lastly, what are we doing right now to ensure teachers that they have a future here? If I was a teacher in this district, I would be getting my resume ready, and there's a nationwide teacher shortage. That's it.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and skip down, if you've seen the agenda, we're gonna skip down to discussion and/or action items, item E, which is considered the addition of community representatives to finance committee and selection process requirements. I'd like to do that while expressing everybody's mind, and Dugan Rainey is gonna speak in more detail with that.
So, we've had lots of outreach on people wanting to help with these issues. So, in order to do that efficiently, we have a form up here. If you are interested, fill it out. Sondra Hall's information is on the bottom. It has like your community involvement, employer, employment history, you know, just basic information. And so, that way, when the financial committee, as far as Brandon and Dallas and me, start going through these issues and we have specific things, I know I've talked to Jamie about some things. We can see what your specialty is, just like you were saying, finance or whatever. So, if we have an issue that comes up that we need to, for instance, inform the community, like if we are gonna have a tax increase or we wanna pass something on the ballot, we can form a committee to inform the community, and that way, they know what's going on. That way, we can be a good, clean vote, and if we do need to pass it, and it's a good thing for our district, everybody is knowledgeable about what's being passed. That way, they know what they're voting for. Because I know I'm guilty when I go to the ballot, sometimes I don't know what I'm voting, you know, I mean, there's things on there that I have no clue what it is. So, if it's an issue that deals with our kids and it's something that is really important to us, that way, we can educate everyone here and make a good, informed decision on what we need. So, if you are interested, after the meeting, come up, get this form, or while, if we go to executive session, fill it out, Sondra's on the end down there, if you wanna give it to her now, or you can email it, or however you do it. So, that's, that's kinda what we're, we're talking about on this. We are starting to go through some things. There is a lot of information that we have to process, a lot of items that we have to see, where we're spending a lot, where we're not spending enough, where we're making more money, what we can enhance or do a better job at. So, we have to see, we have to be efficient on what we're doing as a district and how we're spending our money, where our money's going, and where we're getting the best bang for our buck. That's, that's what we're kinda going for. That's just the preliminary, preliminary stuff, but as far as this action item, it's basically this sheet. So, if you wanna fill it out, be, we're more than happy for you to do it, and just submit it to her.
Can I ask a question? Um, Rainey, with this, now, when you are asking volunteers, are they gonna be able to sit in on all these discussions?
I guess it depends on kinda like if it's a, if it's a personnel issue, I know that's an... I'm saying that's an exact, but as far as, is certain issues, yes. I mean, we will be in just a, a meeting, you know, just a small meeting and, and talk about, you know, if we have issues. I know me and Brandon haven't, and Dallas haven't really dove off into it very deep. So, we really don't know what we're gonna get into, and that's why we wanna get a list to see what people's specialties are because we don't wanna waste y'all's time and we don't wanna waste ours. So, I mean, if your specialty's one thing and we're really needing something else, there's really no reason to waste your time, you know? And that's kinda what we're trying to get with this information.
So, that person will be able to participate in all these discussions?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and like I'm telling Jamie, you know, if, you know, informing the community, or helping form a committee to kinda put, you know, maybe a flyer together or something, like, you know, just getting different information of what's gonna be the most, to relay the message that's the most simple, where people can comprehend it, where it's a general information of what we're trying to do. If that's the case.
So, you're not really looking, you're looking for more communications person, or are you looking for input?
We don't know yet, that's just it. We're trying to see what we need.
Okay, 'cause I, all I'm thinking is if you just look for somebody in communication, they need to be involved.
We need to see who wants to get involved and where. Because I, I personally can't make a decision on who to put on a committee if I don't know who wants to do it and what their, what their talents are, so.
The, uh, that particular committee, um, will make the recommendations to the whole board, and the board will go over it. And there will be other external people involved as well. We have some expert financial people, we're not, just starting down this road by ourselves. Just, um, we've got some excellent financial resources, so it's gonna be very in-depth. And I wanted to, right, correct, address something that Kelsey said. Yeah, you're right, teachers get panicked. And I've lived through that my life as a teacher, went through, everybody knows, I think, what a reduction force. That it could be one of the recommendations. It may or may not be, Josh is gonna make that determination. But to that end, what we've asked Josh to do is to bring in the teachers next week, Monday, and the board will sit with the teachers as well and give them as much information as we can to allay their concerns and let them know that we're not gonna chop their head off when they walk out the door. So, we're all in this together. We certainly think our teachers are a very important asset. We wanna hang on to it as many for as long as we can, and they don't need to panic at this point, so.
Can I make a comment regarding committee?
Yes.
So, it's always my understanding, if you're gonna form a committee, you need to understand what that committee is gonna do, how they're gonna do it, and have a goal. It feels like we're putting together a committee before we know what we're gonna do. And also, how do we, what's the selection process gonna be on the people to fill out the paperwork? Are they gonna be presented to the public? Is the board gonna select those people? Because truthfully, I felt that transparency was really needed. Because truthfully, I felt that transparency was really needed. And like, who's going to decide how it goes? Is the committee going to make recommendations that they want to review the financials in detail and discuss it? Or is the board just going to come to the committee when they need something? Because what I really feel like needs to happen is the committee needs to come to the board when they need something.
That's how we see it too. That's how we see it too. So, um. All right, we're going to move on to action items. And the first action item we have is to consider and take possible action regarding the voluntary resignation and separation agreement related to Dr. Charles Holloway. Do I have a motion to approve that resignation agreement? I make a motion to the resignation of Dr. Charles Holloway and approve the separation agreement regarding the same. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dallas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next action item is to consider and take possible action to appoint an interim superintendent to replace Dr. Holloway. I make a motion to appoint Josh Ballinger interim superintendent until which time a permanent superintendent can be named. Okay, a motion has been made to appoint Josh Ballinger as interim superintendent. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, uh, consider and take possible action to designate a superintendent search process while we, we have to have a search process. Of course, that's a state requirement. So we need to take, take a motion for that to create a search process. I make a motion to move forward with an internal superintendent search process. Okay, do we have a second? Second by Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um.
I'd go ahead and take action on E. Go ahead and take the action on E.
What action? What motion would you like to make on that?
That we're going to submit that. I make a motion on action item E. Consider the addition of community representatives to the finance committee and selection process and requirements.
Okay, second by, motion by David, second by Stacy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. At this point, that's all the action items we have on the agenda. We are going to go ahead and adjourn, adjourn into executive session where we will sign these agreements. And we should be back shortly.
I did a little bit of a tree.
Yeah, we're going to finance board, we're going to do, um, the finance committee updates. That's before you go into executive session.
I mean, I think we covered that, but we don't have any updates at this point.
No updates.
Other than the committee representatives.
You guys are in the, you've got gifts, and y'all are having the financial updates.
Let me look at that sheet.
Is there a sentimental person?
Yes.